It is. All right, it is 5:30, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order and I invite those who are willing to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Botts?
It was Jeff.
Okay.
I'll do the second if you want me to.
Okay, Mr. Oy and Mr. Botts, Mr. Botts and Mr. Oy. Sorry. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number six, administrative report, 6.11. Jackie.
Budget year-to-date looks good. We're at 33 percent. Last year we were at 33 percent. Trying to get the books closed, thought they were closed, and then we had other issues Monday, and then I thought they were closed today, and called the co-op. The co-op's going to call the Department of Ed, so there's another... We don't know what it is. Well, I know what it is, but I don't know how anyone's going to be able to get it fixed somehow. So, there we go. Look at Randy, look at me.
I don't know anything about it.
Other than that, it's a lot that should be presented in December, and...
Okay.
But, yeah. So we'll wait for the Department of Ed, and I told them they need to get back to me tomorrow, like by nine, but I don't know if that'll happen.
Okay.
Other than that, things are great.
Questions for Jackie?
Just deadline for all of that is November 30th.
Friday.
Friday?
Yep.
So, the state, that's their deadline.
Of course.
When the audit has to be up to them, so... And then we'll present the audit at the next board.
And that's why tomorrow morning by nine?
Well, the budget publication has to be in the newspaper Wednesday, and the deadline for the newspaper is tomorrow at noon. So, that's, that's why.
Okay.
It'll happen.
Thank you, Jackie. Any other questions for... Thank you. 6.1.2. Hello, Mr. Strasser.
Hello. Everybody had a good Thanksgiving? Just a few things happening in the next coming couple of weeks. We have our commitment to graduation ceremony, which we do with our ninth graders every year. That's on November 29th. That's this Thursday at 2:00. So we've been making some preparations for that. We're bringing in an assembly for our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. It's based on Mary Shelley's Frankenstein. Apparently it's the centennial or...
Not a centennial.
It's been like 200 some years, whatever. Bicentennial, there we go. That's what I was looking for. But the Baca Museum had some funding to send this out to schools, and we were one of the schools that worked with Ms. Sullivan on contacting the group that puts us on. And they're going to come on Wednesday and work with our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. It's a 45-minute assembly. We'll do two different ones, and it fits well because they do look at Frankenstein at some points, and whether they're actually reading it or not doesn't matter in terms of attending this. And the synopsis is they get to learn about science and culture of the early 1800s from Mary Shelley herself in this assembly. So, that's another thing we have going on. Then the third thing would be a week from today is we're bringing in Joel Penton, who's a former Ohio State Buckeye player. And he's got an assembly for our middle school and our high school students that is going to be based on a stand-your-ground positive message about how ordinary people can accomplish great things. So, that's some of the things that we have for our students coming in. We have going on.
Thank you, Mr. Strasser. Any questions for Cory? What time is that on December 3rd?
December 3rd is Joel Penton.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, it's in the afternoon. I think we start at 1:00, and then another one at middle school's at 2:00.
There's one at night, too, right? Yeah.
He's, he is going to do a community-based one.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's seven?
Not sure what they...
I'm not sure. I haven't really talked too much about that.
Seven?
Yes, it is on Monday.
Thank you. Any other questions for Cory? All right, thank you, Mr. Strasser. Moving on to 6.1.3. Ellen?
Helen? Just wanted to kind of touch base on a few things that are coming up and some things that have happened. I went to the MREA conference with Mr. Anderson and Mrs. Wellnitz, and brought a teacher with as well, one of our first-grade teachers, and learned a lot of great things, and she's trying a couple of those things that she learned in classrooms. So, it's been fun to see that. CEM, we have gone to a couple of trainings so far, and what I'm finding with going there and kind of watching the preschool team is they teach them different strategies and interventions to try, and then they bring it back to the preschool and they try it, and then they come back as their homework and share how that went and the things that they did. And so, it's been great because you get feedback pretty much immediately because the trainings are about bi-monthly, monthly, depending on with the December. We don't have one, but we'll go in January. And so they've gotten some great information that they can use in their classrooms, and some ways that they can target kids that are having trouble being engaged, and being able to take some data from that and help them to get engaged. Win time has started, which is our what-I-need time, and I'm looking forward to checking some of those things out and what they're doing in the classrooms. I was able to watch second grade today, so that was really fun to get in there and see the different things that they're doing for the students. Celebrations, we had an On-Target Arrow celebration already at the end of the quarter, which was really fun. And our first terrific kits, we've gotten that off the ground for our second graders. And, don't ask me for dates, but we have Christmas concerts coming up, our Heartland concert, we have the Hill Christmas concert, and the Brown Christmas concert coming up. And then Gingerbread Houses for the third grade, so lots of fun and festivities coming up here, so, yeah.
So you don't have the date for the Gingerbread House?
I don't.
Just curious.
I'll find out and I'll get it to you.
Okay.
I know it's coming up here soon, like in the next couple of weeks.
Is it still on the gym?
No, I think they're doing it in the third grade's classrooms like they did last year. Just seeing.
Okay.
Yep.
You mentioned CEM.
Yep. That's Classroom Engagement Model.
The preschool grant that we...
Yep, that we're doing the joint powers agreement with MDE, so...
Can you give me a few examples of interventions that we've learned and tried?
They talked about R3, which is routines to the third power. So instead of just doing routines, they'll do a routine within a routine within a routine. So it's not just you're putting up your coat, it's you're zipping or you're unzipping your coat, you're taking it off, you're hanging it up. So they're breaking things down. And then also like standing in line, you're not just standing in line, what are you doing while you're standing in line? Because little kids like to touch each other. So what are you doing to, you know, help so that they're not... They're staying engaged in what they're doing and doing something purposeful, but not picking on each other kind of thing, so...
Yeah.
So things like that. Thank you. Yep. And zoning, they've looked at zoning, too, like the different ways they zone the classroom, and how, where you place your pairs, and where you place your teachers, and so it's been really, really helpful and really cool to see, and it's some, it's things you kind of already do, but you don't think about it, but you're more intentional about it, so it's making you a little bit more intentional about some of the things that you do, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for...
I was curious.
I know. Intervention is a good word. I know. Good, good. Thank you. Tony.
Hello, Ms. Wellnitz. Number 6.1.4. Yes. Okay, that's not her, that's later. Okay, get the right thing out in front of me. So, one of the board members asked for a dyslexia screening update, and we were able to give a dyslexia screener, which we chose a decodable word screener, to our K through eight students. The K through four did an early reading-type decodable word screener, and then the five through eight did an auto reading decodable word screener that is more for their age. And it was, they could do it on the computer themselves, where the K through four, they have to do it one-on-one with the teacher. And so what we found so far, K through four has had it done longer than five through eight. Five through eight just got to it in November. And our kindergarten has a little bit of risk here and there. They, they had less risk than I thought, so it gives us the data in low risk, some risk or high risk. And our students in third, second, third, and fourth grade are at 95% low risk. There was only 5% in second grade, but third and fourth grade were all at low risk for having decodable reading, needing decodable reading intervention. But that view changes as we get into fifth, seventh, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So now I'm very curious as to, okay, what was the testing environment? What was said before the test? You know, did the kids really take the test to really take it, the screener to really take it, or did they just... Because when you look at our seventh and eighth graders, 50% of them are at some or high risk. There's a little bit of some, but more are at high risk. So it's, it goes along with our proficiency levels. So the data geek in me now needs to understand the reason why the data is showing this. I haven't been able to pull all the middle school staff together to have that discussion yet, but it'll be an interesting find when I'm able to. And then what are we going to do for those fifth through eighth graders? How are we going to be able to intervene at fifth and through eighth grade when decoding is a problem? If it's really a problem or not, depending upon was the test valid or was it not? So, good questions there. So our elementary, looking good. We kind of have a spike of some decodable issues in first grade, but not, probably more 45% of those students have some risk or high risk. And, but like I said, second, third, and fourth grade are rocking it for this year at our first time. We'll do the screener again in the winter when they do our, we'll do it three times a year, so that student, we can have the, hey, the beginning, where are they at now, and then where are they at in the end, so that we have a bounce to the spring or the fall when we come back. Another, I think, another question from the school board was a fast testing update. So our K through two students have been screened with early reading, early math, A reading, A math, and the decodable screener. So we're able to look at their very early skills all the way to their skills that can show their growth, and that's where that A reader and A math come. Our fifth, or our third through eighth grade have been screened with A reading and A math, and our third and fourth grade also did the decodable reader. Our next screening window is January 7th through the 18th, so that's our winter screening period. And how are we using that data from the fall screening? Win time, what I need time in K through four is to build student capacity on the skills that they're lacking that are shown by fast test results, whether it be from the fall or from the decodable screener, or now when we're into win time, every three weeks the kids get progress monitored, so they're screened again on that specific skill that they're working on. Decodable data was shared with each grade-level team, and then individual student benchmark reports were discussed at parent-teacher conferences, and those parents who did not attend, those were sent home to them. MREA, I was able to attend that and come home and get something rolling in our district right away. We listened to Suzie Pepper Rollins, and she talked about pre-teaching academic vocabulary, giving kids like the upper edge, whether they're kids who may have a disability or just kids who are in the classroom, all kids, to give them an edge up. So I asked our K-12 math team to use the tip sheet, its term information and picture. So you'll notice on our lovely wall art over here on math standards that our K-12, that there's now a column that says vocab. And I asked our staff to use the test specs for each of the standards and the benchmarks, and pull off, because the test specs provide us with the necessary vocabulary that students need to know, and mark that next to the benchmark on our charts. And what they're asked to do then is by the next unit that they start, they need to pre-teach all the vocabulary using, give them the term, give them the definition, show them a picture, and have the students recreate that picture so that they can get it in their head. It's using both sides of your brain, and by teaching it before you get into the unit, when you get to that word, the kids have confidence because they already know what you're talking about, rather than springing it on them later. So we're asking them to bring evidence of what they did and how it, what effect it had to our January math team meeting. We have a math team meeting every month, and so over December, you know, I'll remind them, hey, remember you were supposed to do this, and then bring that data in January to see what, what effect it had. We might not see it the first time, but as students are pre-taught vocabulary, their confidence builds, and especially in math. I mean, I'm a person who has not always been, I'm not a math-minded person yet. So I appreciate when people can explain to me and show me a picture of what mathematical issue I'm dealing with before I have to really do it. So our, our staff are looking at that. That's one thing I was able to bring back from MREA and get rolling right away. That's all I have at the moment.
I guess pre-teaching is better than reteaching.
Correct! Pre-teach is better than reteach. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from Ellen?
I just want to clarify that the dyslexia, we're not, we're not...
Nope, we're not diagnosing.
We're not diagnosing anybody or labeling anybody, but we are doing some of these things that maybe could show some dyslexia type symptoms, and then actually trying to just do some interventions with that, but I just don't want anybody to think we're, it's not our job to identify and label, and it's really one of those things that's a little unusual. We seem to do that with everything else, but in this case, we're just trying to identify students with some reading issues and give them some strategies to help with that, so... But we use the term dyslexia because that's kind of what it is. Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Any other comments from Ellen? Thank you, Ms. Wellnitz. You're welcome. All right, moving on to number 6.2, school board members. Anything?
Budget finance coming up here in a week or two, but nothing for them.
All right, we'll go on to 6.3, Mr. Anderson.
All right, enrollment this month was up, so had a couple months where we were going down, and it was like, whoa, they're not, but it did bounce back, and we were back up eight from last month, so that's good. They're still moving back into town, so... Also, I had some correspondence from Minnesota School Board Association. I was asked to give this leadership development certificate to Randy Erdman for his completion of Phase III training, so...
Got that, Randy.
Which brings us into the annual conference in Minneapolis. Randy got us into the banquet with this, so we can all now, whoever's going, we can go to the banquet, and I think he gets his name read off or something.
Probably just read off.
Yeah, but we still get to go there, and it's a nice meal, so...
Good job, Randy.
Go, Randy.
Doing it for the team. I have also facility progress, a meeting this week. I would like to get things ready for our resolution by next month. In looking at the timelines for an April election, we have to have absentee ballots ready by mid-February. So I think if we do, if we can get that resolution done and sent in and the paperwork, that gives us over a month and a half then in preparation for even people who could start voting in February. Because if you do it in January, you're now stretched down to about three, four weeks before absentee ballots, and that isn't much time to start having conversations and going out and talking with different people and putting brochures together even. I mean, even that having something that we can try to get out to our community on, you know, the what and the why of all this. So my goal here is that by our December 17th meeting, regular meeting, we're going to have a lot going on, so might want to bring a snack along that night. We've got truth and taxation, we've got the audit, and we'll have, of course, the resolution won't take much to it, but I think we'll have that, I'll try to have that for the December meeting, so... The annual conference, Minnesota School Board, who else going? Randy, Katie, Jeff?
Randy.
Lance is, Lance is giving us a strong maybe.
A strong maybe.
Yeah. So, but we'll go there, whoever goes will get tickets for the banquet, for the award presentation, so we can be there to support Randy. And then one other thing I had, we, the state of Minnesota requires schools to do lead water testing or testing for lead. That was done and completed, and very happy to say that we're in really good shape here. They did find one sink in some custodial closet or something at Brown that had, was just a little bit into the danger, whatever parts per million. I don't think it was anything that was over, but there was a sink somewhere that, you know, no kids ever drink out of or we don't do anything with, but otherwise, the rest of our district showed up very good, all below, well below lead levels in all of our stuff here, so I just thought I'd share that since they were making such a big deal out of getting our lead testing done, and so that's been done, and it looks good, so... That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Any questions for, any thoughts or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for that. We'll move on to number seven, 7.1, second reading of policy 503 student attendance. See anything else?
Yes, we've gone through and made sure that the district policy and the elementary and middle school, high school procedural and excuse absences and unexcused all align. I think I mentioned last month that we've had, we've got attendance procedures, but I just happened to notice we didn't have a district attendance policy. The school district sets the policy, so kind of doing it backwards again, but one of those I found that we just needed to really have in place, so I recommend that, that's all been double-checked, and the principals have gone over it, so we've changed the wording as needed, and it's ready to go, so...
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the second reading of the policy 503 student attendance? Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion? Any other comments, discussion, questions?
Have you looked, does this align with the county's trinity as well?
Got all that state statute and stuff, too, so...
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the second reading of policy 503 student attendance signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 7.2, second reading of 2018/19 paraprofessional senior list. 7.3, second reading of the 2018/19 secretary, custodian, tech, and AP seniority list. And 7.4, second reading of the 18/19 teacher seniority list. See anything else?
These have been sent back to each of the units, employee units. They've had their opportunity to point out anything. We've had a couple of questions, but everything is in order, so they are set to go. Again, this is a big issue with this, is if there's any layoffs or any types of things, seniority is where we base those things off, so these need to be accurate, and they've been checked over the last month, so I recommend their approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 7.2, paraprofessionals? 7.3, the tech AP secretary? And 7.4, the teacher seniority list for 18/18? Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, the second reading of those signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number eight, new business, 8.1, approve income contract with Midwest Community and Technical College.
This is the contract we have for the construction class. We went into kind of a joint venture with Minnesota West and the Pipestone Economic Development Association and the school district. So we're paying part of the cost of the teacher for this program. We have a number of students that are in it this year. Are we up to, over ten?
Nine was the last.
Nine? Yeah. So, last year I think we had four, so very strong interest. They're working on a different house again this year. It's been, I think, overall, the process went very well. They sold the house, the EDA got money back for all of the things in there, so this is something we will be talking about because we were trying to get this program off the ground and get things running, and I hope that they've got, you know, maybe the EDA or we can find some other ways to, so we don't have to continue to keep doing this in the future, but I think for now it's been a good investment to get a program going, and so, but recommend that we continue with this agreement with Minnesota West for this year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the income contract with Midwest Technical College? Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, the second reading of those signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number eight, new business, 8.1, approve income contract with Midwest Community and Technical College.
This is the contract we have for the construction class. We went into kind of a joint venture with Minnesota West and the Pipestone Economic Development Association and the school district. So we're paying part of the cost of the teacher for this program. We have a number of students that are in it this year. Are we up to, over ten?
Nine was the last.
Nine? Yeah. So, last year I think we had four, so very strong interest. They're working on a different house again this year. It's been, I think, overall, the process went very well. They sold the house, the EDA got money back for all of the things in there, so this is something we will be talking about because we were trying to get this program off the ground and get things running, and I hope that they've got, you know, maybe the EDA or we can find some other ways to, so we don't have to continue to keep doing this in the future, but I think for now it's been a good investment to get a program going, and so, but recommend that we continue with this agreement with Minnesota West for this year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the income contract with Midwest Technical College? Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the income contract with Minnesota West Community and Technical College signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.3, 1920 budget timeline. Oh, did I miss one? Sorry. 8.2, we'll go to that one first. Approve the summary of... Approve the summary of the 17-18 World's Best Work, Best Work, oof, duh. World's Best Workforce Report.
Yeah, you gotta say it faster. Don't try to do that one, so just let it go.
That one first, you want to say anything about that one?
Ms. Walnitz has our report here for us, so she'll take us through the summary of, this is last year, so.
Thank you.
Yep, and so we just, they changed the report considerably, so if you remember what I shared last year, it's different than what I'm sharing this year. The content's still the same, but the format's different. And so we made a distilled version for you. You guys got to read the full version in your board notes, but to share tonight, so you can click. Our district advisory committee, I hold community members. There was an article in the paper with a web link for people to email if they wanted to be a part of it. I described what would happen there. I put it on Facebook a few times, and this is what we have ended up with. We also added six student council members to be a part of it as well, to get that student voice. So they, they can't all come to every meeting, so they, two at a time are coming to each of the meetings. So it's kind of, it's a good experience for them, plus it's good for us to hear their feedback. Could you go to the next? The first part of our World's Best Workforce is looking at equitable access to the experienced and effective and in-field teachers. This is part of the Every Student Succeeds Act. We're really digging into and looking at equity and ensuring that every student in Minnesota has an opportunity for an equitable education. When we look at our gaps, I looked specifically at our math data and our math students who are enrolled in regular ed or regular math courses versus accelerated courses. And I also looked at it by which students, how many free and reduced students are in those accelerated courses. And we do have a gap between our white students and our free and reduced students who are enrolled in courses of an accelerated nature in math. However, when we look at the standards, the standards are the same for every student at every grade level. So this makes us question offering accelerated math courses. Something that we're, if we have the same standards in every course, shouldn't everyone be accelerated? Question that's out there. So some strategies to improve the access for our free and reduced population. We're in the exploration stage at this time of it, but we are working with our district math team, as you guys know, aligning the Minnesota standards, as you can see on our walls, reviewing current instructional practices in math and reviewing current instructional resources of math in grades K through 12. We're also continuing to align the Minnesota ELA standards and review instructional practices in reading and language as well. So it's a, it's a continual thing, I can't just focus on math and forget about reading. It's where are the gaps. This year, I pigeonholed our math for looking for the gaps, but I know we have gaps in reading as well. Can you go to the next slide, please? And access to diverse teachers, our EL population is seven percent. Currently, we do not have a licensed EL teacher. We do not have any certified or licensed staff who reflects the diversity of that, that EL population. However, PAS has two paraprofessionals who support EL students in our district who do reflect the diversity of the EL population. So how can we improve this? We can only advertise and, and deal with what we get. You know, we can expand our net for advertising, but our population versus the need of those teachers, we have to make do where we're at at the moment, and we know, we have the capability out there. We, we are aware of the need for that, and when we have the opportunity to hire to reflect that diversity, that would be great, but until then, we'll do our best.
Well, if you recall from our results too, our, this is one of our strongest areas. We had some really, really good things going on here, so, so it's working.
It's working.
Even though the state will go, oh, you don't have the right people, so we'll, we'll look at it.
We have people who may not have an EL licensure, but people who have a huge heart and who have a licensure in ELA and elementary education, but their heart overrides it because the relationship matters sometimes more for our EL population than other populations. So there are five goals in the World's Best Workforce. The first is that all students are ready for school. And our district goal is ensure children in our communities are ready for kindergarten. And the result of that, last year, we had ninety-two students enrolled in preschool. The previous year, we had a waitlist, and that's why we hired another preschool teacher and expanded that, so no student was on a waitlist for a public school preschool opportunity. Plus, our preschool was accepted last year into the classroom engagement model program for this school year, and they have begun applying what they have learned. We are on track for our goal status in this area. Our second area of the World's Best Workforce is that all students in third grade achieve grade-level literacy. Our goal is to implement interventions to ensure each child reads at grade level by third grade. So when we're looking at our results, six more third graders were in the achievement level of meats on the 2018 reading MCA as compared to 2017. Forty-seven percent of PAS third graders were not proficient on the 2018 and 2017 reading MCA. Sixty percent of our free and reduced third grade students were not proficient on the 2018 reading MCA, while fifty-four percent of our free and reduced third grade students were not proficient the previous year. So our goal status is, we are not on track here. When we look at what is going on, what are we doing about that? Let me get to the right page. We have a few strategies in place this year. It's our second year of implementation of our new reading curriculum, K six. It's our first year of What I Need Time implementation in grades K through four. We are in the first year of using FAST assessments to progress monitor students during What I Need Time. We have had literacy professional development from Jen Jones. We purchased and used the Reading Strategies book, Your Everything Guide to Developing Skilled Readers, by Jennifer Salvirallo. And we are in our first year of screening students K eight in decoding skills as a dyslexia screener. We also have Reading Core in grades one and two, or excuse me, K and one. To know if all of what we're doing is going to help get us back on track, we'll be conducting formal fidelity checks in grades K through four on the implementation of the non-negotiables. The leadership team this year created a list of negotiables and non-negotiables for the implementation of the reading series. And so Ms. Bartman and I will go around and assess using a walkthrough format of are they doing the non-negotiables or not? And if they're not, what can we do to help them? How can we better support them in ensuring that their non-negotiables are happening? So that we have consistency in grades K, K through four with that implementation. So how will we know whether it was helping or not? Our fidelity check, as well as our What I Need Time FAST bridge data will show if implementation is helping more students meet proficiency. Closing that achievement gap. I just looked at my screen, I'm like, that's not the screen I'm on, because I was reading from that screen. Sorry, Mr. Anderson. So our goal here is to improve MCA math and reading performance at each grade level to the state average. And we're working to align curriculum and standards and provide professional development for teachers. As a result, as a district, forty-nine percent of our students in grades three through eight and ten are not proficient in reading. Sixty percent of our free and reduced student group in grades three through eight and ten are not proficient in reading. Fifty-seven percent of our students in grades three through eight and eleven are not proficient in math. And seventy percent of our free and reduced student group in grades three through eight and eleven are not proficient in math. We are not on track for this goal. So when we look at what we're doing for this year in this area, last year, curriculum maps were worked on throughout the school year in both reading and math. We're working on aligning the math and reading standards. This year, through the creation of common course guides, middle school through high school and grade-level checklists in grades K through four. And we will, we're working with our district math team to align those standards, review overlaps and gaps, and identify instructional best practices, best practices, and identify resource needs. And beginning in November, staff were expected, they were arrested of it at the first day of workshop, but by November, they were supposed to be posting their standards, benchmark, I Ken statements in their classroom that they can be visible, they are heard, their students hear them repeatedly, and the students can explain to another person what standards those are. So in December, November and December here, Mr. Strasser and Ms. Bartman will be conducting walkthroughs to check for that specific request to ensure we are teaching to the standards. We can say we are, but unless we have evidence showing that we are, we can't know. So that's where we're at to get that goal back on track.
To get us too off track, but it just does bring me to a point, we've got these, it's kind of fascinating to watch this stuff on the wall. This is the math standard implementation, you know, and you go through and you look, and I'm seeing things like, well, it's covered in March and February. All the standards in the grade level. It's like, well, what are you doing September, October, November, and December? You go to others and you see chapter seven, chapter ten. Well, what else you teach? I mean, these things need to be taught, and some of them, it's, we cover them in the review for the MCAs. That's how you're teaching? You know, I mean, these are things that, practices that we're doing that, this is the way it's always been, and you, when you start writing it down and looking at it, that's when you start going, okay, what are we doing here? So when you talk about this alignment stuff, this is where, this is where a lot of the stuff, making sure that our students haven't taught to them, they're exposed to all these standards. You know, you'll hear this, boy, we don't even, we don't teach that. Or where's this, I've been teaching this and it's not even, I mean, you just, that's where our teachers need the time to do that work, so anyway, just wanted to, sorry.
Well, no, don't be sorry. It is an accurate reflection. It is some deep and not-so-fun work, but it needs to be done. We have to, you know, it's just like when you're setting your goals for the year. Why are you, you have to do everything, you have to teach every standard and every benchmark with intention. And you can't just say, I'm covering that in March. How, with what, what resources? What type of instruction are you using? Are you standing in front of them, or is it small group work?
What if they don't get it, then what?
And what are you gonna do? When you look at, you'll hear me talk about the DuFors Four Questions. What are you gonna do when they know it? What are you gonna do if they don't know it? What are you gonna do, you know, there are a few more questions that go with that. Our staff are gonna have to answer that for every benchmark in math. What are you gonna do if they don't know it? What are you gonna do if they do know it? Well, you start this and they get it, okay? How can we accelerate those who know it while we're working to get the rest of them there without getting everyone else too far ahead, but still meeting their needs, meeting these people's needs, so we can all learn at high levels? I get a little excited about this. All right, all students college and career-ready by graduation is our next World's Best Workforce expectation. So our goal is to ensure students are college and career-ready at graduation. Our results, seventy-four percent of our 2016, and you'll notice that I have 2016 graduation results because graduation results lag, because they pull in all the data, and students are allowed until June? No, July of the previous, of that summer to become a graduate, and then beyond if they, they go beyond that. So 2016, we had seventy-four percent of our students enroll in an institution of higher learning. Forty-four percent of our 2016 graduates in the free and reduced student group were enrolled in an institution of higher learning in 2016. Our students are significantly below the state average in requiring remedial courses at institutions of higher learning. Significantly. A lot of schools send students to college and write into remedial math or remedial English. Our students are above that. They, those who attend higher, those who attend institutions of higher learning tend not to need remedial courses if they graduate from Pipestone. So our goal status there is on track. And then all students graduate, we strive for one-hundred percent graduation rate. In 2017, eighty-three percent, which was sixty-seven students graduated. Of those sixty-seven students, seventy-seven percent, or thirty-four students, were the free and reduced student group. So we had a high percentage of our free and reduced population who graduated. And so therefore, we are on track with that status. Does that mean that we're, that we're happy with eighty-three percent? No, I'm not gonna be happy until one-hundred percent graduate, multiple years in a row. But it gives us something to continually work toward. It's not something that you can go and sit back on our laurels and say, oh, our kids always graduate. Nope, it's something we have to work toward every year. So I believe that is the end. I need a approval of this summer report so I can submit it to the Minnesota Department of Education by December fifteenth. So, does anyone have any questions?
Your graduation rate, what, you've got sixty-seven students? So what is that based on?
The number of students who graduated.
Typically, it's a four-year, so from ninth grade to twelfth grade.
So the colony then would not be in those numbers, or would they?
They're excluded because they're part of our district.
So does that skew our numbers because they do not warrant graduation up there as a necessity?
You are accurate.
So a hundred percent graduation rate for our district with the colony involved?
It's difficult.
Is it?
We may need to adjust a little bit. But when you start looking at this data, that's where you start realizing.
Asking those questions.
Because sometimes they can say, geez, you got an awful low graduation rate, but when you dig into it a little bit more, you start finding out something, or you remember or recall, I mean, you just don't think about all of that stuff.
I do know we have a couple of young ladies who are moving toward that graduation.
Yeah.
Girls, yes. So looking at eight point two, do I have a motion to approve the summary that Ms. Walnitz just reviewed for us?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Bots, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman, any other discussion?
I would just like to add, I'd just like to say thank you to the board and the community for supporting some of the things that we're doing here. This has been a basis of our goals, and I would have to say that we've put our money where our mouth is. Ninety-two kids getting a preschool experience in this community, that's not all us. I mean, that's all the preschools in town. I mean, that's, that's a very good number, and, you know, we're, we're investing as a district in that. I think the time for our teachers on those early dismissals, twelve of them, that's twenty-four hours of time that we're taking to do this curriculum work and to do this. I mean, it's, this district is investing in working to turn these, some of these things around. And it doesn't happen in a year or two, but I think once, I think we have some really good things going on here, and I just, I want to make sure, say thank you to the board and to the community for, through your support of these endeavors that we're doing.
They're needed, and without time, time is our, our most precious commodity. And in education, everyone says, I don't have time! Well, we're able to provide that time where they don't have anything else to worry about what, other than what's in front of them. I'm hopeful for some high gains, for, you know, a propulsion in many of our staff, so.
Well, I think where we focus at the younger grade levels and then really what's coming in, that's where you're gonna see your bank for your pocket. That should bring all your stuff up a whole lot quicker.
See it? Can I please?
Cool.
Well, it's just even interesting looking at the students who were in junior K last year, who are now in kindergarten this year, how they are leaders in their classes, that they, they're able to participate fully because it's like they've been pre-taught some of those basic skills that they had been lacking to make sure that they're prepared for kindergarten.
Do you have any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the summary of the 2017-18 World's Best Workforce Report? I didn't say it fast, I got through it. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now moving on to eight point three, nineteen-20 budget timeline.
We're coming to that time of year where we have to start thinking about nineteen, twenty, nineteen. Um, we're coming to that time of year where we have to start thinking about nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. We're to the twenty twenties, so.
I'm sorry.
I know. So, we need to start thinking about and, and preparing for a budget that needs to be done by June thirtieth. Um, and I think that you just don't sit down on June first and figure that out. So, um, I've got here a timeline of, of starting here in December. Um, you know, there will be a finance committee meeting on December fifth. Uh, we're gonna get some of the preliminary, uh, numbers from the audit and kind of a forecast of where we're going for this year. Uh, and they will kind of set some parameters, I think, for the admin team, um, to start working from. We'll bring, uh, on December seventeenth, a report will be made to the full board where you will, the whole board will make the decision if, you know, where, where the admin team goes. Do we need to make reductions? Do we get to make additions and improvements? Do we budget neutral? That was kind of the rule last year, so that'll be decided here. And then from January through about March, uh, the admin team, team and I will work on putting together, um, our budget and our improvements and, uh, whatever needs to be done, uh, for, for March, so. And from, between March and June, we kind of fine-tune and make those final adjustments and do what we need to do to have a buddy, budget ready, uh, by June thirtieth. Jackie gets to do it. So.
Any questions on that, Ms. Reardon? No? Good. All right, moving on to eight four, approve the resolution authorizing entry into joint powers agreement in the form of a declaration of trust establishing the Mintrust and authorizing participation therein. Would you like to give us some information and then read the resolution?
Yeah, we've, uh, got the, um, currently, we use the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund. Uh, is where our state payments and most of our money, uh, come from or go into. Jackie manages our funds. We have bank accounts in different places that the money goes. We met with PMA, which is a financial, uh, company that does financial planning, and they basically manage your cash on hand. A lot of what Jackie does is about cash flow. Um, people in business understand cash flow, where, we've got that thing going on too. Uh, we have a lot of dollars, interest rates aren't very high, but they're coming back a little bit. But, um, really, for Jackie's time to sit and, you know, be a money manager, she's got other things to do than to do that. And these people will, will do that for us and try to, um, take care of our money and gen- and make us the most amount of interest they can.
For free.
For free, that, kinda.
Isn't it baked into the rates?
It's in their rates. They, they, they get something from the rate, so, you know. Uh, their, their, their portion is like point one-five to point two-five, um, percent or whatever of, of interest. So if it's three point two percent interest, they take point one-five or point two, and we get the three, so. Uh, but we estimate that they could, uh, probably generate an extra thirty to forty thousand dollars, uh, possibly. Can't guarantee anything, but don't know what interest rates are. So, we just feel that this would be a really good move to do that. They utilize the Minnesota Trust. It's like the Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, but it's called Minnesota Trust. And they are municipal advisors, and all of the money in here is from municipalities, so school districts, cities, counties, government entities. This is a place where they have their money, so, uh, very safe. I've checked with a number of superintendents who use this. Uh, over two hundred school districts are now in it in Minnesota, and all just have nothing but very, very good things to say. Uh, they make money for you, so that's, I'd like to see us put our, put our money to work a little bit better.
We're not pushing.
So.
So.
That's where that's at.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing entry into joint powers agreement in the form of a declaration of trust establishing the Mintrust and authorizing participation therein?
There it is.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, you wanna read it?
No.
After.
You read it.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's all I have to read?
Resolution authorizing entry into joint powers agreement in the form of declaration of trust establishing the Minnesota Trust and authorizing participation therein. Basically, this, this, this resolution says that Pipestone Area Schools is gonna be a part of this. You gotta do it one time when you initially, uh, get in, because this is where, where that is, so they need this resolution.
Okay. Did I get a motion? And a second?
No.
Remember.
Erdman's second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving eight point four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight point five, approve the contract with ISG.
ISG will, um, moving forward, if, if the bond were to be passed, they would be our tech and engineering firm. Um, this is their contract. All of this, uh, all of the payments to ISG is through the bond, so this is not general fund, just like our construction management firm. They become part of the bond proceeds, and that's how they're compensated, so. Uh, this is their contract, and I feel that it's prudent at this time to, we've, we've got Klaus Anderson on board officially. We've been working with ISG. This is kind of the formal, get it together with them.
Right, so do I have a motion to approve the contract with ISG?
Over.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Any other questions? Any discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the contract with ISG signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mrs. Louise. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Adjourn.